I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Tim.
How's everybody doing?
I think we're so.
It's a beautiful day.
It is. It is a beautiful day.
Carol, do you have power yet?
Yes. Thank goodness. We got it back on Saturday.
Yeah, we did too.
Yeah, that first time it came back, we, uh, everybody got excited. But the second time, I jumped up and ran around the room and just, it was just, you know, we, I think it'd been like four days or something and it was really starting to wear on me, you know, all the, I'm all right till it gets dark, you know, you know, as long as they're daylight, but when it gets dark in the house and you got candles and flashlights, it's just, I don't know, that's no TV or, you know, you really get caught up on your reading, that's for sure.
We were without power for ten and a half days.
Straight?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Hers was nine. The second time.
I'm preaching to the choir then. You guys have been through it.
We have a staff member who still doesn't have power yet, and I have a good friend who lives just down the road around the van for me, and she's still out of power too.
Hmm. Yeah, some of, some of the devastation was really focused on certain area. Maybe it's the way that what kind of trees they had in that area or something like that, but in Royal Boyd County, ooh, I drove up to there and, and then I'm on the fire department board too, and they were talking about, I think they had a hundred and some calls over just that period of time, you know, just trees down and people don't know who to call, so they called the fire department thinking that's gonna do something.
Well, we are fortunate. Um, my nephew and his girlfriend took us in, us, two dogs, four cats, one that was sick and got everybody else sick. All the other cats were sick for most of that time, so went to the vet a lot while I was there. There's a really nice vet in Moorhead I could tell you about.
Oh, so they lived in Moorhead? You went there?
Yeah, we went to Moorhead.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't have to go far fortunately. Um, we're, we were very fortunate. We didn't, we didn't have any pipes break, we didn't have any, uh, um, anything, uh, we just had to leave for a few days, so.
Yeah, my mom and dad, it was so funny, they were going home, uh, Monday, I was, they checked into Fairfield for a couple of days 'cause it, they're very needy and we decided, you know, soon as we got a room, but anyway, they drove, was driving out of the driveway and my wife texts and said the pirates are back out because she works nearby their house. And it was just, I thought, what, what next, you know?
Hi Bobby.
Hey.
Hey, Bob.
Tim?
Hmm?
Did you get a tablet? Do you have an iPad or?
No, I didn't get one, no, so.
You know what? I will make sure that by the next board meeting, you have one.
Thank you.
So that you can do this stuff electronically, so. Tell you, it's saved on the amount of paper we've had to deal with so much. It made it so much easier, so. How are your folks doing Bobby?
They're doing well. They're doing well. They're staying in and, uh, everybody's doing good here. How's your mom?
She survived her second COVID vaccine, like she did the first one, three days in bed.
Oh, my goodness.
So even though our power came back on on Saturday, we stayed another three days with my nephew just because mom couldn't get out.
Yeah.
So. Well, did you guys lose power for long?
Yeah, we lost power for about four days and, uh, we went and stayed with some friends, good friends. The friends we went to Italy with.
Oh, wow.
So they were, they were nice enough to host us for four days.
We, we stayed with my nephew, my nephew and his girlfriend, so we were really fortunate too.
Yeah, we, we didn't have anything to heat with, so we were pretty well stuck going somewhere else.
We didn't either.
Did, uh, did you send out the documents?
It got loaded about two o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, I don't think I got them.
Do you need a, um, link to the folder? Because they should be in the folder.
Okay, I'll look. Let me look again.
Yeah, we, we didn't get that second email. It was just the notice and said the documents would be forthcoming, but when, I never got, received a second email notification of that.
Yeah, none of the stuff came through.
Okay, so it, uh, I didn't send a link to anybody, but you should, all right, I'll send out a link. I sent a text, but apparently the text didn't go through.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Tim.
How you doing?
Very good. How are you?
Yeah, you working from home?
Yeah, the, the, so the wireless is so bad at work. Actually, not work.
The wireless is so bad at work, uh, I didn't want to try to struggle through another meeting with everybody freezing and all that.
Yeah, that, uh, those network issues sure got situated with, you know, everybody was trying to use their Wi-Fi hotspots and, you know, it was, I went to the warming center there one day and did a Zoom call there. That was pretty neat, you know, I, I have to say kudos to the Boyd County, uh, you know, Eric and his group because that, that warming center was, uh, I, I would say it saved some lives, really. It was, you know.
Sure. And it looks like they've used it as a staging area for the power company, all their contractors too, so that's, uh, there was, there was a lot full when I came in. Uh, they must be at shift change or something.
I was out last night and they were coming, I guess evening turn was coming off, you know, man, they're like a caravan when they're coming out Lawrence County or somewhere. It's like a parade of pirate trucks.
They, uh, they came up into our neighborhood, um, gosh, I think Saturday morning, and it was like the cavalry had shown up, high fives and waves. I was glad to see them for sure.
Tim, Bobby, you should have received the link now.
Yeah, I got it.
Thanks for your patience with that. It's been kind of bizarre in my life lately. And I didn't have any internet, I don't have internet at home, so I couldn't do any of this last night or this morning, so I had to come in and get it done.
So Armstrong was pretty amazing. I don't know if, is that who you're with Debbie?
Yeah, um, our, um, cable's actually down in the backyard.
Oh, okay. Uh, I don't know how on earth they kept it going here. We lost it, um, Thursday, the week of the second ice storm, and then lost it for about a half day, I think this past Monday.
Wow.
Or Monday of this week. How they kept it up and going, I don't know, but, uh, when we didn't have electric, we still had internet, so it was, it was pretty cool.
How long were you out of?
Generator.
Well, how long were you out of power?
Uh, let's see, so it started icing that, so the first ice storm, we were at without power, uh, I think from Thursday, the first storm hit on a Thursday, right? I, I think we were without power that evening until Sunday, and then when we had it for, no, till Saturday, then we had it for, you know, a day and a half or whatever. Um, and then we were without power again until this past Saturday evening, so, um, lots of running back and forth to fill up gas cans, but thank heavens, you know, we had a generator, so. Actually, thank my sister. She and her husband went, uh, to Lowe's north of Columbus and found a couple and brought back.
Wow.
So I couldn't get my old one to start, so, um, she was a lifesaver.
Heather is running late. I have not heard from Jennifer.
Okay. Uh.
You have a quorum.
Yeah, so I hate to start without people. Would, would everybody mind to give, give Heather another five minutes to join?
She's actually in a school board meeting. Oh, there she is.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Great. We'll let her get connected and then go ahead and start.
Carol, could you text me how many meetings Jennifer has missed in the last 12 months? Hi Heather.
See her name.
I do too.
So I've just messaged, messaged her to see if she could hear us. She must be having a hard time getting connected. Uh, she's dropped off.
And she said she was having issues. I did the same thing. Um, she's struggling with it and she's trying to get the mic to work, so hopefully she'll get it.
We'll give her another couple of minutes and then, then we can start. Okay, I, I hate to start, but we don't know how long she's going to have trouble getting on, so, um, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. It's, uh, four of six PM. Uh, this, uh, just a reminder for everybody, this is, uh, being, uh, broadcast out on YouTube. We don't have a way to take live comments, but if, uh, anybody watching has any comments, suggestions, uh, or any, any other thing they'd like to pass along to the board, you can do that at president@thebookplace.org. And we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda that, that is in the board packet?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries. And, uh, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes that, uh, were placed in the board packet?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries. That will take us to the financial report, the first part of which is the financial statement and the balance sheet. Uh, anything you'd like to highlight, Debbie?
I, I apologize for getting this to you all so late. I appreciate your patience with me. Um, there's not anything, it's January, there's not much going on. One thing you'll notice on the first page where, uh, the revenue is, you'll see some reimbursements for almost nine hundred and ninety, almost nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. That actually, uh, is money that comes from the bonds to pay the contractor, and I'm not entirely sure yet how to put it in the budget because it really isn't revenue. Um, so I'm going to talk to the auditor to see exactly how those get put back into the budget so that it makes sense. Um, but just to let you all know that there's a, there was about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars deposited into your account to pay for, or to reimburse, we got reimbursed out of the bond money rather than the budget for the contractor. The contractor payments, so. Hi Heather.
Hi, I'm so sorry. My internet is like hating me and every device I have was like, no. It's a hotness, but I'm here.
No worries. I, I had to leave work and come home. It was, for whatever reason, it was terrible at work, so.
Well, my iPad was like no access to mic and no access to video, and I could hear you guys, but I couldn't say, and you couldn't see me, and then, so then I was like scrounging to find devices that would work, so, but this one does, so I'm in.
Good.
Glad, glad you were able to get in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Heather, we've just gotten, uh, up to the financial statement and, um, Debbie, I don't know, did, did you hear about Debbie explaining, we'll have to figure out from the auditor where to put money coming in from the bond?
Yes, I got that.
All right.
So.
All right, any, uh?
I don't have something else set up correctly, but they'll, they'll let us know how to, how to take care of that. That's pretty much it. There's not, it hasn't changed a whole lot since last month.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Debbie on the financial report? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll, uh, move on to the treasures report. Uh, anything you'd like to highlight there Debbie?
Um, money going in, money coming out. Money allocated.
And checks being signed. We're super trying to get in there with all these weird, you know, natural phenomenons.
It could stop anytime it wants.
For sure, for sure.
We were joking at work, this is the ice storm of the century, since we're kind of early in, that was kind of easy. I hope it's a hundred year ice storm.
Me too.
For that.
I have to say though, for like ten days, nobody talked about COVID.
That's true. Numbers weigh down.
Nice change.
Okay, if, uh, if nobody has any questions, uh, Debbie, uh, do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report and pay all the bills?
As treasurer, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And motion carries. And this will take us to the future department, and looks like we've got Tiffany Seibert with, uh, programming and outreach.
Hello everyone. Thank you.
Actually introduce you Tiffany. Hang on just a second. Tiffany, it's actually Tiffany Seibert.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She is, she's with our programming and outreach, and she's been doing the online stuff, so I'll let her tell you. Sorry, I just wanted to introduce you Tiffany.
Okay, um, so yeah, like Debbie said, I'm over the programming and the, um, we haven't had much outreach services lately because of COVID, but, um, I'm starting to get that back into, um, get back into our routines again. Um, unfortunately, I can't go there, but I'm making packets for them, just drop off of the stuff that we used to do when I was able to go and visit in person. Um, everything has been online. We've done everything virtual. Um, September was the official, when we officially planned everything virtual, and I think it's gone really well since then and considering the circumstances that's been going around. Um, we've been having a lot of good activity across a lot of our social media. We've got a lot of good views. Um, all the departments are doing really good in their programs and the having, um, things weekly. I'm starting to do more things weekly now, just to get more involvement for people to get onto the library to keep in contact, because that's what we want. We want them to stay in contact and stay in touch with us, even though we're virtual right now, and we are open, but you know, we still want them to, you know, keep in contact with us. Um, let's see, right now, we are, well, we've been working on our summer reading, and then of course, that is going to be virtual again this summer. Um, we're hoping to do our pictures in the park safely. Um, they're in Central Park, because it is large enough, but we haven't, um, we're working on it, planning it, so we haven't gotten the official, um, I did talk to the parks department and, um, she said it was okay, but we're still planning, and we still have the rest of that to do, because that's part of summer reading as well. Um, but for the most part, we've gotten, um, our adult views since September have been one point one thousand views, and I think that's pretty good. Um, only thing I think it's kind of interfering is like where everybody is, all, everybody's kids are homeschool, well, not homeschool, but everybody's learning at home. Where we're, we're trying to take time doing our, helping our kids as well as, you know, watching the library stuff too as well. Um, so I think that's a pretty good number considering all things, but of course, we're hoping to get it, um, a little more as we're starting to plan, um, as for future programmings. Um, a lot of our programs have been popular, especially the crafts. Um, I did a witch's hat craft, and I ran out like in the day one. They ran, ran out of packets the first day. Um, I did like a little pillow for, um, for winter. Um, I had a few of those left over. Um, crafts are always a good, but I'm just trying to reach out and get different program ideas, not just keep doing crafts, but, because that craft is always popular. Everybody loves to do stuff, and especially back in December, I had some family friendly ones, and so that was of course popular. Um, but other than that, I feel like everything's going really well, and I feel like, you know, we've really adapted to everything going on right now. I think virtual's doing well right now, and hopefully we'll get back to face to face soon, but not sure when that will be, but you know, but I think everything's going well right now considering, so.
Thank you. Any, anybody have any questions of Tiffany?
I love your kids' programming. Um, I'm a librarian in an elementary school, so I've shared a few of them for my kids.
Good, good, yes, yes. Heather does a great job.
Yeah, she's great.
Yeah, she does a really good job.
Thank you very much Tiffany.
You're welcome.
You may.
You're welcome to, if, if we were in person, this is where Debbie would say you're welcome to stay, or you could go, so we'll, we'll, we'll say that virtually.
Okay, all righty, well, thank you for your time, and I will see you guys later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, we'll move on to business then, and the first item is, uh, capital outlay for, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five, so working on the five-year plan. Um, Debbie, would you like to, uh, highlight?
Give you an update on Jennifer. She's stuck on Boy Scout Road, so.
Boy Scout Road?
They're waiting to move heavy equipment, so hopefully she'll be here soon. Okay, capital outlay, this is just kind of give you a opportunity to look at things, look it over, so that you can have questions at the next one, and hopefully, um, we can have you guys approve it or make changes for it next month. Capital outlay is all of our big. Capital outlay is all of our big ticket items, anything that's a thousand dollars or more in cost. It's not reoccurring stuff. It's furniture and equipment, capital improvements, and technology goes into capital outlay. Pretty much, most of the stuff is carryover from last year or from this fiscal year, except for the vehicle. We actually got that purchased this year. Furniture and equipment's about forty thousand dollars, capital improvements about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, technology is about sixty five thousand dollars. A big, couple of big things are the remodel of the reading garden, having problems with that. Upgrading our security cameras and then just you know, maintenance of the building kind of items.
Debbie was stepping out just a little bit, but was there any damage to the reading garden from trees or branches or anything like that?
No, but there's been just water and freezing damage over the years that have caused blocks and bricks to break. So we're having to remodel it, so we save. None of the buildings had any kind of weather damage. We're very, we're very fortunate.
Is the total for 2021, 2025, is that correct? Twenty-two thousand or should it be two hundred and twenty thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the board folder as well, so you can look at it and see exactly what everything's going towards. You don't need to move on it today. Wanted to give everybody time to look at it first.
Sure.
Why does it go down in those odd years, like in 23 and 25? You know, it's like, what, ten thousand or something, so?
In some years, projects don't need to be done. Some years are, it has nothing to do with odd or even. It's just, this is when this needs to be scheduled. We're looking at doing this in this particular year. We try to plan out five years and sometimes what happens is we didn't get stuff done this fiscal year, so it just gets transferred to next fiscal year. So it looks like the odd or the evenings are influencing the capital outlay, but it's really not. This fluctuates a lot on how equipment's doing and you know, if anything needs to be, this is where like we have to have roof repair, where we've done all of that, so that's not on this year. And anything big would go on this, so. That's a long answer to a short question. Sorry Heather.
I was saying, like the HVAC system and some stuff repairs we did, does that, that comes out of this too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're back in a cycle where we need to replace several HVAC units. We've got a lot. There's a lot of sections in this building that get replaced about every fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah, for those of you who don't know, the main branch, gosh, how many parts are there? There's like three main parts to that building. Oh, it's one building and they're all, they each have sort of their own HVAC. Or was it four?
There's six.
Six, okay. So it's been added on over the year. I guess the core of the building was the old WPA building that you see in some of the Hanner's photography collection, but yeah, so it's a real maze of additions and all of them sort of like the layers of an onion, I guess, but anyway. Alright, any? Any questions for Debbie on this one? We'll have a lot more next month, I expect, after Debbie's had some time to digest this. Okay.
One more thing I want to say, this is, the capital outlay is put together by the department heads and myself. And looking forward, trying to keep as much stuff catch stuff before it goes bad. So the less we have to spend on maintenance or emergency repairs, the better, so. There is a little planning in this.
So is it a required document or is this something we do just so we can forecast needs out like that?
It's to forecast needs out.
Okay, any other questions on that part? We'll move on to budget for salaries and Debbie, if you'd like to go on your, go over your recommendations and.
Sure. Salaries is the biggest chunk of our budget. It's about fifty, fifty-two percent of our budget. There's several, there's several things you all can do. You can adopt no salary increase. You can adopt any percentage that you want to between that, and I tried to give you a few things that would show you how it impacts the budget. First thing is we don't have any control over how much we pay for retirement for full-time staff that is set by the legislature. They've set it at twenty-six point nine five for this coming fiscal year. Salaries are impacted by, of course, wages, retirement, and then federal taxes. Things that we are required to pay. We can't, you can do several different things. Don't make any changes at all. No increases at all. The budget would still go up about six thousand percent. Now, this is compared to what was approved for the budget because it, by the end of the year, we never spend the entire personnel budget because of if we, if we get somebody who resigns or quits for some reason, you know, where several will have usually a couple of months without that salary. And we lost Lee this last year. We'll need to lose him. We know where he is. He retired this year. So, you know, we took that out of the personnel budget because we've outsourced that, which has been a fabulous thing. Not that Lee wasn't doing a great job, but it's been really, it's been very helpful. Anyway, so, so this is compared to what was budgeted, just be aware of that. Three percent would impact the budget about forty-five thousand dollars, two percent, thirty-two thousand dollars, and one percent, nineteen thousand dollars. So those are, those are just the some numbers. You can request any other numbers that you want that I can plug in. It's in the monte. But I give it to you so you can make some decisions.
So Debbie, excuse me, historically, we've tried to hold the salaries about fifty percent of the budget, give or take. So this year we're at fifty-two percent. What would that percentage be with each of these increases?
There are such little increases compared to this year's budget that it's just about the same.
Okay.
It's not even a number that, like point ten percent, you know, it's not much at all.
Okay. And so, when, I'm struggling to remember how far back this went, but when we tried to keep the salaries at fifty percent-ish, it seems like I remember that that was, that was a benchmark that we wanted to hit and that most of the libraries in the state, that's a higher percentage of the budget. Anywhere from sixty to seventy-five percent. Is that still the case?
That's still the case.
Okay, so so this still leaves us in very good it leaves us managing more of our budget for serving our patrons, not that people aren't serving, but so I'm, that's a wonderful thing.
Just a little bit of background for me historically too. Is it just a across the board for every employee that we employ? Or is there, you know, if we say three percent, there's no performance appraisal or anything like that? Where you can say, well, Sarah or Billy or Bobby or whoever, she's really not, you know, she's just kind of doing what she's supposed to do. You know, the library doesn't have that system in play, correct?
We have a modified version of that. We have across the board, as long as you are meeting your job requirements, if you are on a performance improvement plan, you don't get the raise until you successfully meet the requirements that performance improvement plan, and then it is not retroactive at that point.
And but we are speaking of the whole of staff, everyone.
Correct.
With the exception of you. Or is it you as well?
You have historically included me in that. Hi Jennifer.
Hi. Hey.
Hey Jennifer. So Jennifer, we're on the, discussing recommendations for, or options for salary increases for the upcoming year.
And how to, do we just kind of let this one simmer or is this something that needs to be addressed? Are you bringing it before us to make a motion that we do two percent, three percent, or are we just kind of talking about it right now?
This time, since it's such a big item, you guys will, this is just something to discuss now and think about and get questions. So hopefully you can pass it next month. To kind of give you an overview real quick of the budget to remind everybody else, we do the big things, capital outlay and salaries in February to hopefully get it passed in March. So you guys can have the budget by April and pass it by May. It has to be passed by June, but that's cutting it really close since we're the last Wednesday in the month, so I try to get it done by May. You all are usually good about getting it done in April or May.
That was pre-Tim Burton. Yeah, no, no, I just said that, but yet, I guess, you know, that is a pretty big decision on, you know, outliers this year, you know, has it been a typical year? Do we, you know, circle the wagons and say, you know, because it's been a non-typical year, we just kind of go with what? Or do we say business as usual, you know, if we've done three percent in the past, let's continue to do so? So I mean, there are some things to think about because of the extenuating circumstances, correct?
I would agree.
Present, okay.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I mean, it's not my decision, but yeah, I mean, we've got to think about you know, what we think we're going to be able to bring in next year. You know, we've had bad news with AK Steel for years. You know, so far the growth in other areas hasn't hurt us, but we always have to have an eye toward what we think is coming up and what we can afford, what we think we can afford. So
Would it be helpful to have a kind of a preliminary, preliminary budget next month?
Sure. Yeah, I think so Debbie, if that can, you know, be in the packet a week or so, if that's not too tough a target to hit, if we could have that a little bit in advance for the next meeting, so people can go in the packet and grab it.
Because next year, we'll make our first bond payment, we made our first bond payment, which was twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then our and our second bond payment will be due in September. It's like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so. But we know that's coming. I mean, it's not like that's a surprise.
Right. Okay, so there's some things for people to chew on. We'll move on to the director's report.
I'm, I'm ready for 2021 to be over. I really am really just ready to get back to normal. It's, I know everybody else is too. It's been a challenging year, a couple of years, hasn't it? One thing we are actually starting to talk about is going back to normal hours. The governor is supposed to present his next plan, next step of plan in the first of March. There's been rumors on the director's list serve that he's going to ease up on masks and people getting together requirements. I'm not sure what the right word is. Yeah, that's it. And staff and amount of staff that can work, you know, if we can get more than fifty percent of our staff in, we can go back to regular hours. And that's, that's the hope. And as soon as we hear back from the governor, what his next steps are going to be, then we can start planning to to open more hours. We definitely want to get to something that is consistent. It's driving everybody nuts. Patrons, staff, we know that, but we have to be safe. We have to be safe. We have to keep our staff. We have such a small staff, relatively speaking, for the number of hours we're open. We had to be careful that they don't over, don't cross. Since we talked last month, I'm just going to go ahead and talk about the COVID update because I think that's as important. Since the last time we talked, we had someone test positive and had to quarantine for two weeks. We now have a second staff member who has been exposed by someone in her family. And she's being tested now, so it's getting better everywhere else except here. I don't know what's happening. This, it's just a weird, a weird thing. So we, and they're young staff. They're very young staff. I take that back. Very young is relative. You know, I'm almost sixty, so someone in their twenties is very young.
What's the story on vaccines?
We found out that what we had to do is I had to send a letter to King's Daughters to say that we're included and they have to get back with us with but it's taken us like three phone calls and I don't know how many different people to talk to till we got to the point we know who to talk to and what to do, so.
They're looking at a massive amount of vaccines being put into, you know, the Kentucky community. So the fact that you've got that ball rolling, I mean, they'll give you notice, but you have a good chance of getting ahold of them now, a better chance.
That's what we're hoping for. That's what we're really hoping for.
Yeah.
So.
Debbie, was there any movement by the legislature on those topics that you had brought up before this session? Has anything changed?
No, I have not, we have not heard anything else on those. There was one, but I can't remember if I sent it to you.
With the appointment of board members.
We haven't heard anything else on that yet.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've kind of crossed over into board comments. Any other comments or questions that we'd like to? Throw it Debbie. I do have one. So I listened to the governor's press conference, I think, two days ago. I think I missed it yesterday. Will we generally fall under the guidelines that they're developing for schools? Or will there be something similar to that?
We are. Terry Manuel, the state librarian, confirmed that we are, we will fall under educators, support staff, something very similar to that. I couldn't remember what the term was. I just have to send that letter, send an email to KDMC or to the person at KDMC so they can get us on that list, our staff.
Okay. And we're already sort of doing the pod thing anyway. I think you talked about that with schools coming back to more days in session and having, instead of having kids changing classes, they would sort of be going as a group in more of a coordinated way throughout the day, so I guess to limit exposure with staff and all that, so we'll be working in pods, I assume, the way he talked through the end of the year. At least with schools, I'm assuming we'll see that same sort of, we'll have to do that same sort of arrangement with our staff.
Haven't heard anything on the director's list serve yet, and that usually ends up coming from Terry. Um, haven't heard anything on the director's list serve yet and that usually ends up coming from Terry. Terry Manuel usually can. Let's see, he confirms and gets interpretation for libraries and how they are. Looked at by the legislators and the governor's office.
I, I have a hard time squaring how, how we can, um, increase employee density. And it, but at the same time have people separated off some way. I, I don't know how that works.
Right now, it's been, you know, this group of people work these days and this group of people work these days and so far we have. And making sure everybody stays, um, sixty apart. I don't know. It'll just see what he says and we will work it out. Ben's really good about getting his staff coordinated.
Okay, um, any other board comments, questions? Kind of swerved into the COVID update. Did you have anything else on that Debbie? Okay, um, Midland Branch.
Nothing to report. Things are going on, um. Our next visit is a week from Friday and. Yeah, a week from Friday, the next week is March. So that'll be our next visit, uh, the, the weather last week, put them out for a few days. Of course, they didn't have any power there for like a week. So I don't have a lot to report. It's basically we get cheat rock going up and the. I sent you all that the furnace is in. It's huge. Oh my gosh, it's huge. Uh, it's like six feet. It's just amazing. It's going to be so cool. You can see through it. So you'll be able to see into the, into the patio or see into the library. It's, it's really nice.
I got those, uh, pictures while I was teaching and, um, it was the fifth grade and so I was like. Look guys, this is the new library and they were so excited, so, um, I love those pictures. Thank you. That was really cool.
Cool, cool. Um, I should hear back from them Friday, next Friday, whether we can have the board meeting there or not. They, I don't think there's going to be a problem. Um, we'll bring some folding chairs and set everybody up. Far apart and we'll most likely, um. YouTube stream it again. So we won't have, the public won't be allowed, but, um, we can string it. If we'll work out the details with, uh, Bulldog and Trace Creek Construction.
Okay, um, this will bring us to additional items. Um, does anybody have anything else to bring up?
Did we ever elect officers?
No.
We have not.
So, do you want to elect officers next month? Or you want to wait until? What's this, March, April, April?
I have no preference.
Me neither.
I, I don't either.
Okay, so maybe you will all be there next month and it's going to like officers next month.
That'd be kind of neat to do it in the building. Let's put that on the agenda.
Just to kind of, for me being new, what do you just say, hey Mike, you want to be president again? He said, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do we vote on him or then, you know, what is this? Is it, is it just one of those informal things or is it something that, you know? Do you, do you, do you go around and ask people to vote for you or what?
The newest person on the board usually is, is appointed.
I set myself up for that one, didn't I?
I like that, okay. It, it is, you know, with the, the five of y'all, y'all are pretty civilized and can make a decision. There usually hasn't, at least in my seventeen years here, there hasn't been any dissension or horribleness about electing officers. Mike's not eligible to be president again. He only gets to do two, two terms, two years. I can't remember.
Yeah, that was two, two-year terms.
Yeah, two, two-year terms. You've already had, you've had your second, haven't you, Mike? We're going to have to double check because now I am completely confused about how long officers can be on. I'm sorry about that.
I think so, but, but check.
We will definitely check.
And this, the president, the secretary treasurer, is it three or is it?
Vice president.
President, vice president.
Secretary, treasurer and member.
Okay, so there's one member, that'd be me.
Now, there's where we may do some campaigning.
He's the one who really wants to be the member person, so.
I just don't want to get kind of like faked out here. I want more information that way. I, I know how to lay low and stay under the radar on this.
The president runs the meetings. And, um, signs checks. The treasurer, um. Basically gets all their information from me. Uh, it just seems to be the way it goes, uh, and it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, I, I certainly can pass much more information on. To the treasurer, treasurer signs checks as well. Secretary takes notes and signs official documents. Carol is our recorder, so Carol gets all that together. Um, vice president serves in the case, uh, Mike not being available. Not really complicated. This is really is a pretty well-run board. We try to keep everybody with as much information as possible so that it isn't be a burden to our, uh, appointed and non-compensated board members.
I do have one thing. I should get the paperwork from the bank. She said it should be there tomorrow or Friday. So if it's correct, this is like the third time that I've gotten it. Then I'll need for everybody to come in at your leisure and sign that so that we can get everybody able to sign checks.
Just let me know when you need me there to sign it or when it's there and I'll, I'll stop by and sign it for sure.
I'm at the SkyTire now, so I could just about walk down. I've been thinking I've got good proximity to the library for lunch or whatever, so.
Where are you located at?
It's there on the second floor of the SkyTire, you know, on Bath Avenue. Yeah, yeah, so that's pretty close.
Get your cardio in for lunch.
Get across the street, not dying. Uh, all the board members can sign checks. I am also an authorized signer, but I never sign checks unless I get approval by a board member. Uh, it happens, I don't know, four or five times a year that they just don't get in, so we just can't make it in. I never sign a check that is for myself, as the same as the board members don't sign checks for themselves. There's two signatures on every check, so we do have some checks and balances.
I'd say. This year has been more of a logistical challenge to get, um, two people in, uh. Like last couple of months, we've, we've had some either weather delays or scheduling delays or COVID delays, but so generally. Debbie has had to sign checks all that often, but. Keep the creditors off our back. Sometimes we have to do that, so.
More, more often what happens is, uh, one check will get missed. One of the two will miss one or two checks. Um, that, that, and that's not hard to, that's hard to take care of.
Yeah, so, so their paper clipped together and sometimes one check gets tucked up under another, so. That, you know, that does happen, so. Okay, um, if nobody has anything else, do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say no. And we are adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone.
See you guys.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody. Look forward to next month.